I would like to call this regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council to order. Today's Wednesday, February 7th. Time is 6:32. Have you have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Harrow.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morrison.
Here.
And Mayor Hillmer.
Here. If you're able, would you please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in its will, liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening, so the first item tonight's agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on items that are not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is approval of the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that the council would like to remove for further Are there members of the public that would like to pull any item from the consent calendar for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's oral report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I have a few events I wanted to draw your attention to, and they all relate to a common theme, which is preparedness for possible fire. There's certainly a lot of heightened interest in our community in light of what happened in last year. So there are some events that folks may find very helpful, and we'll be putting this information up on our website. Firesafe Marin is going to be offering classes called Fire in Marin. They're offering one on February 11th, Sunday, February 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the Corder Medera Community Center. And then they're offering the class again on Sunday, March 4th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Tam Valley Community Center in Mill Valley. It's the same class, so you don't need to go to both sessions. They're repeating it to make it available to more people. And then you've probably heard that our assemblyman, Mark Levine, has called a town hall meeting on fire preparedness. It's going to be at the College of Marin on February 10th, and that's from 10:00 a.m. to noon. So I just wanted to draw the attention of the council to that. I also wanted to let the council know that last evening, we held a workshop on our fixing the roads program. The purpose of the workshop was to just have an open house and allow folks to meet our engineering team and hear what the process is like and how we're going through our assessments to determine how we're going to approach fixing all of our roads. A lot of good information. We'll be getting a lot of that info up on our website. We now have a catalog of every street and the treatment that's going to be necessary for that street. So now our team's working on the important part, which is how do we get the best bang for the buck for the taxpayer by packaging these different repair jobs together in a cohesive and appropriate manner. So moving along in those processes, I just wanted to share that with the council.
Are there questions of the city manager regarding his oral report? Seeing none, we'll move to councilmembers' oral reports and comments. Are there any reports this evening? Councilmember Harrow.
Just very briefly, thanks, Mayor Hillmer. I just wanted to mention that I did attend briefly the open house that was held last Tuesday, January 30th, at Besic on the Sir Francis Drake Rehabilitation Project. It was a, again, it was an open house, so it was conducted very similar to the way in which those meetings have been handled before, with opportunities for the public to see different elements of the proposed rehabilitation project and express their opinions as to how to prioritize different components of that project in light of the fact that there's not adequate funding for everything that has been developed during the course of their work on this project. So there is an environmental impact report that has been issued, and I don't think it has been finalized yet. It's been advertised as the document that will be used by the county to finalize plans for the project overall. So that is a work in progress still, but I think it's important for everyone to pay attention because there are some significant proposed changes, in particular, to some of the intersections along the roadway that could have a material impact on the flow of traffic in that area. So just wanted to mention that. It's a topic of ongoing interest within the community, and stay tuned.
Is there a deadline? Is there a timeline for that that is coming up that you know of?
Not that was mentioned. There actually wasn't a lot, there wasn't any staff presentation at the open house. Again, it was basically the same thing that they'd done before in terms of posting diagrams and photographs of different parts of the project on the wall. There really wasn't actually any general information that was provided, and no presentation at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Other councilmember reports this evening?
Our city manager talked about mine already, so I have none others.
Vice Mayor Morrison.
I do. Julian Skinner and I attended the Safe Routes to School Task Force meeting, and we had Zagar, Sam Zagar, the Assistant Principal of Redwood, attend, and he discussed the carpooling at Redwood. He started one of the programs. He said 1,800 high school students attend now. They project, within two years, an increase of 2,150 students to attend Redwood High School. There are two campus parking lots that hold 330 spaces. Teachers and other staffs are guaranteed a parking space. There is a website called Getting to Redwood, and on this website, it informs the parents and the students all about cycling, walking, carpooling, and bus options. They're really trying to encourage students to carpool. They have 40 spaces for students for those that carpool. 70 have applied for these spaces. They're going to add 10 more probably within six months. Staff, they're monitoring the carpooling from 7:40 to 8:10. So not all the spots are filled every day, but they are held for the students that are carpooling. So they're trying to find ways to motivate the students and continue on. Hall Middle School, we had Kelly Zawoski from Marin Transit come to talk about busing for the Hall Middle School. Students now can purchase AM or PM passes, and they're going to plan to have two more routes to supplement the population of the students that are busing. So that's good. All right, that's the update.
Thank you very much.
And how are they accommodating the California law that 17-year-olds can't have drivers in their passengers?
That's the way it is. Yeah, I know.
So it's really only seniors or juniors?
Juniors or seniors, that's correct. And parents, parents can park, carpool, can't they?
But they wouldn't park during the?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping, that parents?
Other councilmember reports. Councilmember Chu.
Not a report, but Councilmember Morrison's report. I have a question for city manager. At what time you were thinking of looking into a request from those surrounding neighborhoods about permitted or residential parking? Is that something that staff is still considering?
Well, we were considering that in reaction to inquiries from the neighborhoods, but none of them have actually brought us a formal request. We probably won't instigate anything until we receive a formal request from one of the neighborhood groups.
Yeah. I think there's also slowly starting to get interest from some of the surrounding communities on the south side of Larkspur that are close to the commercial, you know, restaurants and things like that. You'll hear more, probably.
Probably.
Councilmember Harrow.
Yes, thank you. Though I forgot to mention one thing, since it did occur after the last city council meeting. I was able to attend the most recent meeting as Larkspur's alternate delegate to the Transportation Authority of Marin, to their most recent meeting. As usual, it was an interesting meeting with lots on the agenda, but probably the most noteworthy item on the agenda for that meeting was a proposal in light of progress that's being made to open the third lane on the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge and a bicycle lane on the bridge as well. There's a proposal to consider allowing the new bicycle lane to be used for multiple purposes at different times during the day, and in particular, to allow it to be used for vehicular transport during commute hours, which has not been on the table previously. It has been a source of some controversy within the community that wants to see a dedicated bicycle lane on the bridge. Again, the proposal is only to study the concept of allowing vehicular traffic on the bike lane during commute hours. So no formal proposal made at this time, but it is something that's under consideration. And for those of you who are interested in the issue, I'd encourage you to take a look at Tam's website and ask questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Way.
So Kevin, does that involve, I've been trying to find out more about whether that involves, and I don't know if you know this, a movable zipper type of wall, like we have on the Golden Gate Bridge?
Yes, that would be the idea. So it would be an expensive project to actually have that happen, because you'd have to get the vehicle that does the movement of the barrier out there four times a day.
Okay, thanks.
Over a bridge that's much longer than the Golden Gate Bridge. So that would be an expensive proposition, and it's only understudy at this point. There's no formal proposal.
Thank you very much. Other councilmember reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move to our public hearings. We have one this evening, so we'll open the public hearing. Tonight's item is 7.1, a request for a rate increase from Marin Sanitary Service. May we please have a staff report?
So I'll just briefly introduce to you, as the council knows, each year, we work with our franchise group to have rate requests analyzed. This year, we've selected the firm of R3 to do this work for us, and this is Garth Schultz, who is lead analyst for us, and he is going to take you through a brief presentation about this year's rate request. Garth?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. I'm Garth Schultz. I'm a principal with R3. I've been the lead analyst on this project. I also have spent 20 years working in solid waste operations, both for private entities, public entities, and now for several years in consulting. So it's my pleasure to present to you tonight. As I proceed through the presentation, if you have questions, points of clarity, things that you need understood further, please do interrupt me. Let me know what you need to know. Here's most of what we'll cover this evening in terms of the project and what we're going to, ultimately, what we did through the project. This is what's called an indexed rate adjustment year under your franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary Service. And by an indexed adjustment, it means that the projection of expenses for this year, 2018, is made using market indices, CPI, indices for fuel, other aspects like that. So this isn't a detailed review year, which you've heard probably presented to you previously. The last one was back in 2016, wherein there's a prolonged analysis of the specific expenses. In this year, there are a few expense categories that are directly attributed to the actual expenses that the company incurs. The rest of them are based on last year's forecasts escalated by simple market indices. What we've done through this process was to evaluate the mathematics, the reasonableness of the allocations, a number of other elements that are in a fairly complex set of workbooks and spreadsheets that come over from the company, and we make sure that the math is correct, we propose adjustments, and that's what I have to report on for you tonight. So initially, Marin Franchisers Group, or sorry, Marin Sanitary Service proposed to the Marin Franchisers Group a 8.06% rate increase based on the indexed formula, which is very specific and detailed in the franchise agreement. This was submitted on November 26th to be effective January 1st. So at this point, what you're considering is a rate increase that would include some retroactive back billing to the beginning of the year. In their rate application, Marin San did include an option to reduce that increase by extending the amortization period for their depreciation on new vehicles and assets that were purchased, starting January 1, 2017. Our recommendation is to accept that proposal. It's moving from a seven to a 10-year depreciation schedule for vehicles, which is in keeping with the actual useful lives of those vehicles. So it's to the benefit of the rate payer, there's no real drawback or liability, and it's consistent with what we see in other industry practices. So that immediately brought things down to a 7.23% increase. Everything I have to talk about from there is further adjustments to that. Now, I mentioned briefly, you know, this is, it's focused on indexed with some costs going to actual. So we review the revenues that the company received, their actual expenses for the prior fiscal year, and we work to ensure that there are thorough review of how those are included into the rate application overall. One element that we do look at is what are the projected revenues for this coming year that we're now in, for 2018, based on the current rates? So there's looking at revenues, achievement year-to-date, and the specific expenses themselves. There are a few expenses that are explicitly projected as actual, that's workers' compensation premiums, as well as disposal expense. And I should mention, within the solid waste collection rates that your businesses and residents pay, the vast majority of those expenses are essentially fixed costs of collection. The labor, the equipment itself, those are largely fixed in nature. The variable components are the disposal piece, so the cost to actually dispose of the garbage that's handled in your garbage containers, the cost to process the organics that are put into the green bins by residents and by businesses into compost, and there is a cost to that. It's very similar to the trash cost for processing. And then there are expenses related to recycling, which are handled somewhat separately. One element we also did for you, and it's in our presentation and as well as in the report, is compare your rates and your rate adjustments for the Marin Franchisers Group, for Larkspur, to the rest of Marin County, and also to the Bay Area, and we can, I'll report out on that in brief. Ultimately, after our review, and I'll go over the details on the adjustments, we're recommending a 5.57% rate increase, slightly less than was adopted last year by the city. One of those, and I'll just actually dig into it, this breaks down by category, the amount to which each expense category proposed by the company is contributing to that 5.57. So .87 of it is due to wages increasing, and just increasing, again, based on last year's forecasted expense by last year's methodology, in accordance with an index, which is CPI. Benefits likewise, you can kind of go down the list and see, I won't read each and every one, but I will highlight some of the major drivers to the 5.57% rate increase. Salary and benefits in these solid waste operations, they're very, very labor-intensive operations. Half or more of the costs of these operations are just the people that are driving through your communities, picking up three bins from every household and from every commercial business. So labor is a significant driver to the overall cost increase. Fuel and oil for this year is nearly a percent, and it's a somewhat complicated calculation because there is a true-up element. So to the extent that the company's expenses for fuel and oil were different than the projections for last year, that goes into this year. Ultimately, that, and it's because the price of fuel fluctuates so unpredictably ultimately, whereas with CPI, you can kind of predict a certain amount of rate of increase over year. Fuel does a bunch of different things. This 1% or so portion of the increase is largely due to a change in the fuel index, and it's a true-up element. So this is something that, you sometimes benefit from this. You've had prior rate increases that were very low because the index has been in your favor. This year, it's a little bit not in your favor, but it is just the math, and it's the truth of what happens to the actual expenses incurred by the company. Depreciation, I mentioned that labor is a major driver. Capital is the other major piece of these operations, and the company, for the last five to eight years, has been in the position of, you know, putting new vehicles and new equipment into the field. This is partially in response to new regulations involving air quality and airborne emissions, but also these vehicles do have useful lifespans that become exhausted, and they need more equipment to be able to put those into place. This also contributes somewhat to the overall facilities that MSS operates down on Jacobi Other interests, or other categories that are evaluated, profit is just calculated as a ratio of the operating expenses. So as operating expenses go up, so do profit. So this isn't a change in that ratio, it's just the fact that the other operating expenses are increasing yields a slight increase in the company's profit overall. Interest is tied to the capital elements. The big other piece I'll note here is this projected revenue shortfall, net of changes in expenses. So it's a somewhat difficult thing to understand from time to time, but the way that I explain this to folks is, all of the rates that are charged, with very few exceptions, are on the garbage container sizes used by your residents and businesses. And as those residents and businesses do a better job of recycling and composting and putting those recoverable materials out of their landfill bin and into these diversion bins, meaning it's not going to landfill, it's being recovered, that results in an opportunity for them to decrease their garbage container size and pay less money to the company. When they do that, the company earns less revenue, which is appropriate given the rate structure, but they continue to incur roughly the same overall expenses. So when you adopted rates last year for 2017, that included a rate projection, a revenue projection, that you set your rates in order for them to hit, so that they could recover all of their expenses and their profit. Well, during the course of the year, throughout the Marin Franchisers Group agencies, the five-member agencies I showed earlier, including yours, there's a lack of achievement of that revenue because residents and businesses do a good job of diverting. I call this migration. It means folks are migrating from a higher garbage container size to a lower garbage container size and paying less money overall to the company. This is an important piece of this because it's the major rate driver that you have in this year, and it is something that, we're not making them whole on last year's under recovery of revenues, but when we look at what those rates generate for this year, it means that you have a higher bump in your rates to be able to get there. Hopefully, that makes sense. Now, one of the questions I often get is, why doesn't this go up by CPI? And there's a number of reasons why it doesn't. I mentioned labor. This is a very labor-intensive field. These are unionized workforces with benefits included, and those just simply don't go up at 3.1%, which is what CPI was last year. They go up at a higher rate. The company does have a CPI index tied to their labor rates, which do get adjusted somewhat over time via bargaining, but then the benefits piece does go up higher overall as well. I think I'm kind of getting away from the primary drivers, which is the fuel, it went up a bunch due to the price of fuel changing over the course of the last year and that true-up that I mentioned. So that's, you know, that's the largest single category going up by a fair margin between 2017 and 2018. Capital, again, is a fair component of this overall in terms of the amount of impact it has on the rate adjustment. You know, between depreciation and interest, went up 8% between the two years. That's somewhat less than we've seen as the five-year trend for the company. They are starting to kind of come out of a period of heavy investment, it appears, but it is a major driver overall. After accounting for fuel and capital, really, the other costs only increased by an average of 2.75%. So those are the two major drivers here. When I show this bullet, the MSS indexed costs, so there's, if we just look at their expenses and what their expenses are calculated, it changed by between 17 and 18, using the indexes and truing up those elements that require truing up, like fuel, which I discussed, their expenses only went up by 4.33%. So to get from 4.33 to 5.57, that's due to that migration piece, which I noted here. So it's a significant component yet again. And I discuss migration a little more detail here on this slide. So it's not a small amount. It does contribute to the rate adjustment, and it is necessary in order to bring them up to where they need to be to meet the revenue requirement for this year. Please. Please.
Councilmember Way has a question.
Yes.
I'm curious about the diversion part, the recycling, I guess we'd call it.
Absolutely.
I've been reading things in other publications about how many waste hauler companies are having trouble with reselling their recyclables to mostly the Chinese market. Are you seeing that that's going to become an issue here? And I don't even know where the diverted things from Marin Sanitary are actually sold or reprocessed.
Excellent.
But some of these other waste haulers are seeing a great reduction in the ability to divert that material and then be compensated for it.
Absolutely. Very good question. So what you're referring to is essentially a change in Chinese national policy.
Right.
Which is the Chinese national sword. It is absolutely having an impact across all of the United States and in California and here in the Bay Area. Fortunate for you here in Marin County, because Marin Sanitary Service has retained a dual-stream sorting operation, you put your bottles and cans in one container or one part of the container and your paper in another, that preserves the quality of those materials overall. And we're actually starting to see some communities revert back from a one bin for all their recyclables to this dual-stream approach. I know the company can speak to this a little more specifically, but I've heard them report out, and hopefully I can paraphrase it. They've had a good track record so far, but there have been Chinese inspectors out looking at materials and paper and veils. And from what I've heard, they've been able to continue to move materials, but it is absolutely putting a constraint on the national market for these, primarily on paper and plastics.
Is there consideration of contemplating that in your figures at this point, or is it just too early?
There's really no mechanism to do it within this specific existing rate adjustment structure.
All right.
There is a separate component of your franchise agreement now, which accounts for the surplus or deficit in the amount of revenues you earn on the sale, or the company earns on the sale of recyclable materials compared to what it costs them to process that. So that's not addressed within this adjustment. It is a part of a separate process that the Marin Franchisers Group, R3, and the company are going through to both update the rate adjustment methodology to account for factors like that and to streamline and simplify it at the same time. So that's not yet resolved, but one component of that will be to look at what has been an accumulated deficit in this recycling reserve fund. Again, not contributing to this current rate adjustment, but there is an outstanding point that needs to be resolved on that matter.
Okay, I just found it very curious how the Chinese market is so integral in waste management in the United States, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, absolutely. So this slide, this table shows essentially a summary of what I presented in the prior slide. So it shows your 2017 approved expenses, the 2018 recommended expenses, what the magnitude of the change is, and what that is as a component of the overall recommended 5.57% rate increase. So again, looking down, wages and benefits, fuel and oil, and then the projected revenue shortfall are the major drivers there overall, yielding the 5.57%. Now, we did do a rate survey comparing your rates and the rates for the rest of the Marin Franchisers Group to Marin County and to the Bay Area as a whole. This just gives you an indication of ultimately this 5.57% rate increase for the standard customer, which is that customer, residential customer that subscribes to a 35-gallon kind of middle-size container. It's going to be $2.30 a month more, $2.29, so up from 41 to 43 and 1/2, just paraphrasing and summarizing. You can see what the other communities are. Do note that your rates are somewhat higher than the others. This is due to the fact that you've got a larger vehicle impact fee that's collected on your rates compared to the other agencies. So your base rate is essentially the same as the others. The differences in the rates are due to the different fees that are assessed and charged on the collections made by the company. This shows that a little differently. So you can see yours is in the middle there. It's kind of close to the county Marin's, a bit higher than the Marin Franchisers Group average, and then that's at the very top. The lower two, blue and green bars, are the averages of all other Marin County jurisdictions, and then other jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area. So somewhat higher than the average overall. Again, a portion of that's due to the charges that are assessed on MSS on their gross revenues that they collect. So with that, that was quick, but I'm happy to take questions, comments, or further discussion.
Questions of the speaker, Vice Mayor Morrison.
Garth, I'm sorry, can you repeat why our prices are so high? What kind of, special vehicles?
You have a vehicle impact fee or road impact fee that's assessed on the company.
Right.
And yours, compared to the other Marin Franchisers Group entities, is substantially larger. I don't have the background on that, as we weren't engaged for that piece of this, but that is the reason for that differential when you compare yourself to those other agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Chu. You had stated almost right into your presentation that you switched from seven to 10 years on the depreciation schedules.
Correct.
And you characterized that as being an industry standard and closer to the useful life. Why was it seven years before and now switching to 10?
That's a good question, and I may ask the company to respond to why it was seven previously, as we weren't ever involved in setting that initial depreciation timeframe. It does vary from community to community. Seven's on the low end, from what I've seen. I think it may be that it was more consistent with the financing terms. Many companies will go out and finance these trucks rather than purchase them in cash. The financing terms tend to be more in the six- to seven-year frame, but the useful life of the vehicle is more in the 10-year frame. Is that accurate?
The prior rate reviewer asked for seven.
Okay. So Patty Garberino with the company saying the prior rate reviewer wanted it to be seven. I don't have an idea why.
Okay. Do you know what methodology they use? Straight line? Straight line or double declining?
For depreciation, it's straight line.
Okay. Yeah, I'm asking that because, you know, the way you're, you know, this is shifting now, then all the expenses would have been more weighted up on the front end of that and we would have already absorbed the expenses in an earlier year where, you know, possibly if you look back in retrospect, we wouldn't have had to have made as big of a rate increase.
Potentially, and that's something we can look at as a part of the updates to the methodology that we're looking to complete this year. So I'll take note of that. I should note, just to make for clarity, this change in the depreciation schedule only applied to new assets that were purchased on or after January 1, 2017. So anything that was previously on their books is still on whatever remaining schedule was used at the time.
Okay. Yeah, you answered my third question because originally when you characterized it, made it sound like you were going to be switching the depreciation of existing assets.
No, yeah, it's just for the new assets that were acquired during the 2017 year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the presenter? Councilmember Harof.
Thanks. I just had kind of an overall question so I can understand it. So my understanding is that the service proposed a rate increase of 8.3%, correct?
8.06, yes.
Oh, 8.0, okay. And your recommendations are, among other things, to make that adjustment to the depreciation schedule, which would bring the proposal down to 7.23?
Yeah, that was their, that was an initial option they proposed. We definitely.
That was their proposal.
Yeah. We definitely recommend accepting that component, and then we further adjusted down from there.
Okay. So in your, with your adjustments, you get down to 5.57%?
Correct.
Percent?
Correct.
Can you explain in general terms what's, what is the difference between what they took into account to get their initial in excess of 8% increase to what you now are getting, which is less than a 6% increase?
Yes, absolutely. There was two primary categories and factors that we looked at, well, really three. Depreciation and interest are two of them, which was we looked at the allocation amongst all Marin Sanitary Service entities, which includes Larkspur and the other four Marin Franchisers Group entities, and then others that are not a part of the Marin Franchisers Group. So we looked at the allocations of those expenses, discussed those with the company, proposed our adjustments to which they agreed. So those brought the depreciation amounts and the interest amounts carried on your rates down from what was recommended by the company. The other thing that we did was looked at their projections of revenue for 2018 and specific revenue achievement for 2018. So as I mentioned before, that what we start with is if they were to have no rate adjustment, what would their revenues for 2018 be? And because of this migration issue, we know it's going to be slightly less than what they were for 2017, even without changing the rates. They used a methodology that looked at a three-year kind of average trend of their quote-unquote "underachievement" of revenue due to migration. I forget the exact value off the top of my head, but we recommended a slightly, a higher amount of revenue achievement than they were projecting. So we made an adjustment that said, we believe you're going to achieve a higher amount of revenue in 2018 than you're forecasting for a variety of reasons: strong economy, greater level of subscription. And ultimately, there is kind of a bottoming out of this migration effect. There's only so far down that can go because there's a limit to how far folks can continue to subscribe to smaller container sizes. So those were the three primary areas.
Okay. So that last component is just a difference in opinion about how to calculate and project revenue?
That's correct, which again, they agreed to as we discussed the adjustments.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions of the speaker? Councilmember Chu.
Yeah. Will you be making any comments about the 2019 methodology?
I don't have much to report on, other than we did make a substantial amount of progress in late 2017, developing a new methodology to achieve several aims. Streamlining the approach. It has been a fairly intensive approach, both for the company and for the Marin Franchisers Group. Every year, whether it's a detailed year or an indexed year, there's a lot of effort that's involved. So one of the ways that we are pretty sure this is going to turn out is to rely more heavily on indexed cost adjustments and to only do a detailed review if specifically requested by the agencies of the company. Right now, you're on a fixed schedule, so it's a detailed followed by two indexes and then another detailed, really without any discretion. One of our recommendations is to move towards a more indexed-based approach, and as long as both parties are happy with that indexed approach and how it's functioning year to year, keep with that until such time as you need to do a detailed review. So that's one of the primary elements. Another major factor that needs to be undertaken as a part of this is to address what happens with migration, because we see that's a significant component. That's still unresolved, but we have some concepts that have been bandied about between the company and us and the group, and we have some headway. The other component is to, forgive me, I'm kind of, it's escaping me. Oh, one element that we know would have to be started, when this update to the methodology goes into effect, you do have to do a detailed year to make sure that your baseline is right. You need a thorough evaluation of the baseline, and then from there, it becomes an indexed set of adjustments. So what we do expect for 2019 is to proceed with a detailed review. It's the normally scheduled year for a detailed review, and that detailed review would then result in a rate adjustment for 2019 that thereafter would be adjusted by this new streamlined, indexed-based, updated-rate methodology, still yet to be finalized.
Yeah, will you also be studying pricing?
Of what specifically?
Of services.
In terms of rate structure? To a degree. It's not an official part of the scope as of yet, and there's been some discussion of that. Usually, when there's a discussion of the rate structure, there's a few elements that we can look at and consider. One is the relationship to pricing and cost of service by what sector. Ultimately, the companies tend to route commercial, industrial, and residential properties via different types of trucks and crews. And so the allocation of how much revenue is collected via one of those sectors versus the other is something that can be looked at. There's been discussion with the Marin Franchisers Group, but no specific direction on that yet. The other I mentioned is, and we are seeing communities, including San Francisco, Menlo Park, and others, who are starting to, and this gets to the recycling revenue piece of this, to actually assess some nominal rates for the collection of recyclables and organics. For decades, we've been in a place where we only collect the revenues of these systems based on garbage, whereas the truth is, there's costs related to garbage, costs related to organics, and costs related to recycling. Those are very largely similar, which is why you have the migration issue when folks do downsize their containers.
Yeah, that, I mean, you pretty much are going down the path I'm thinking of because people are being asked to reduce, but the reduction is making it appear like it's costing them more. So the rate structure needs to take more into account the fixed cost of providing the service, and the variable component really is purely just the size that can at that point. So it leaves very little on the variable.
It very much does, and ultimately, what you end up with is, you currently have a rate structure that's somewhat steeply inverted, where there's a near-linear relationship between your smallest container size and its cost and the largest container size and its cost, in accordance with, say, the gallons of that container. In reality, when you take into account the fixed versus variable portions, you end up with a rate structure with only nominal differences between the container sizes. And we are seeing those go into effect in a wide variety of communities now, but it's a bit of a, it's a new shift in the way the industry is setting those rates.
Yeah, that's closer to the expectation that people need to be aware of, because it doesn't matter what size your container is, you've still got to get the truck out there every week.
Whether there's a bag or five, exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Are there other speakers representing Marin Sanitary here this evening? Before, are there questions from the public of this speaker? Or you want to take them at the end? Comments, questions, comments?
I can make a comment at the end. I guess I could ask questions now, but I'd like to make a comment at the end.
Okay, that's great. Okay. Mr. Garberino? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Dan. And what I'm about to say is very critical, and it's all over the country. Recycling, Catherine, is in a state of chaos right now, and it's not because of the Chinese. The Chinese have been buying our garbage for many, many years. For 20 years, 20 years ago, they were getting a dollar a day. They're getting $18 a day. They don't want our garbage anymore. Every single day, every day, we fill this room from wall to wall, floor to ceiling, back up to where Patty is, with garbage that comes out of the recycle bin. In addition to that, there's about three cubic yards of glass. We just installed a quarter of a million dollars for new belts that rattle, shake, try to get the glass out of the paper, and it's almost impossible. They've been inspecting us. We have to break three bales up. They look at it, if they pass it, they'll take five container loads. So this is really, really serious, and when we brought one councilman from Santa Fel down to explain to him after he voted no on the rate increase, he truly understands what he had seen, and he couldn't believe it. Then another councilman from San Anselmo the other day said, Joe, nobody told me about this, this and that, about this whole room full of garbage that they're putting in the can. Every single kind of plastic you can even imagine, they're putting it in the recycle bin, and none of it is recyclable. We've got five container loads, 40-footers, baled with plastic bottles, number three, four, five, six, and seven. Nobody wants them. Nobody wants any plastic bags. Every other plastic is so low, you barely make a dollar collecting it and preserving it and trying to sell it. So the situation is serious. We'd like to have a symposium of all of our elected officials so they can see what we're talking about, come down and see it, and then have a public hearing in our office. We will be contacting the editor of the IJ to put a story in for us, but it's serious. Nobody can blame the Chinese. When you order a truckload of apples, you want apples, you don't want bananas and oranges. And matter of fact, that they're rotten on top of it. So this is how serious it is. You have to see this to believe it. And I welcome all of you at any time to give me a call. I'd be more than happy to show you what's really going on at our end, trying to do something with a product. Now, when we started in 1980, we developed the truck. We bought a chassis. We put three boxes on the chassis, one for bottles, one for cans, one for newsprint. And it was always only newsprint. And then it became, and only glass and only cans. Now, anything that you can think of, they put it in that recycle bin. Now, the communities south of here in Marin are paying $80 a ton to dump their recyclables, to dump them, because nobody wants them. They're all smashed in together, and everybody else that went single stream can hardly get rid of any of their products. And as of now, it's getting closer. Chinese New Year's is just about over now, and when that's over and they get back to real hardcore business, they'll close a lot of people's down. So I'd like you to be aware of that, and I thank you for your attention. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And you're all welcome to come down and see what I'm talking about.
Thank you for explaining that. I am very, I had read several pieces in the New York Times about this issue, and I know it's just at the cusp of changing in your industry, so.
Yeah.
Are there ways we can better? I know you do a good job at putting out information to the consumer about what's in and out. Are there other methods that can be done that may make your, our residents be more understanding about what they're supposed to put in each?
Catherine, I'm trying to make it simple. Put out something and tell the people what is recyclable. And what we recycle, just newsprint and cardboard and bottles and cans. Throw everything away.
I didn't even know that. I didn't even know that. Honestly, I thought it was.
That's as simple as it gets. Nobody reads this.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
And the worst culprits are the apartment houses and businesses. And the apartment house, they just couldn't care less. Now, we're giving people three notices. After the third notice, we pull the can.
Oh.
That's the only way out. We'll be closed down, and they mean it. Luckily, we've gotten away because we're dual-stream, and we're right there washing and managing it. But it's been difficult because of the market situation. When the price of oil was $100, they would melt everything down to make new plastics. Now, at $40 and $50 a ton, it's easier to make it out of oil. That's the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have one thing.
Yes, Patty?
With so much trepidation.
Please.
No way I could add to what he has said, never. But I think I need to add that we're in a sandwich, all of us. The state mandates that multifamily and commercial get these services, and the onus is either on you, the jurisdiction, or on those businesses. So those are high turnover populations. It's a very difficult thing to be able to achieve in terms of public education, but we've been working very closely with Dan and others to try to make that happen. So those state mandates, and I know you live by those all the time, the ones that are unachievable, is a real squeeze. So thanks. Oh, this is Roger Williams, our new CFO. I wanted to.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to imagine how we cope with our Amazon world with all the waste we generate.
Yeah, it's changing, and what we've done is put together a whole new waste characterization study to be able to transform it into some more.
Well, we pat ourselves on the back for how much we divert from the landfill, but if we knew truly how much we waste overall, it would.
It's horrific.
Blow your mind.
Right.
Other questions of Marin Sanitary from the council? Mr. Holmes? Mr. Public?
James Holmes, Modron Avenue. I'm sorry that people aren't doing a good job of sorting out the recyclables. I can't tell you from my own experience, a couple times I've called to ask questions about what should be recycled and what shouldn't, and I've got answers that either were unclear or conflicting, but in any event, that's neither here nor there for the rate increase. I see good news and bad news here. The good news is that there's a new reviewer, which brings new eyes and a fresh look and is consistent with the city's approach to its general accounts, and that's very good, and I think it's already borne fruit with respect to the revised depreciation schedule. And also very good news is that the cities are working on a proposed methodology, a new methodology that would include, according to the description of the staff report, not only indices but performance metrics and cost containment and incentives for, and possible caps. I was very concerned to, about the implication on page three of the staff report, the third full paragraph, that possibly the new process could generate higher increases, and I definitely think the impact, the import of this, of any new rate methodology should be to contain the increases. The bad news is that they're using the same old methodology, we now have the same old result of another 5%, 5% to 6% increase. I wonder if, I mean, it was noted in the staff report that they couldn't give a test run this year of the new methodology because there wasn't time, and I wonder if that was because the, it was filed too late in November, according to the staff report. Staff report didn't say it was filed too late, but they said it was filed in November, and that's awfully late for a new methodology. As usual, there's a long series of small increases, and I'll just mention a few here, but the big picture is, according to the staff report, 15 years, the average is 5.9%. And so that's been an increase of almost 78%, which is a pretty hefty increase. And the attachment shows that Larkspur's rate is way high, and some of that is due to the vehicle impact fee. But I think the most important thing to do is to compare Larkspur's rate with the rate of the most nearly comparable town, which happens to be Cota Madera. And the report shows that for the 20-gallon, Cota Madera is $28, I'm rounding it off, Larkspur is $37. Now, if that's due to the vehicle impact fee, that's one thing, but if that ain't due to the vehicle impact fee, then there's quite a substantial difference that is due to something else, and we need an explanation as to why we're so much higher than Cota Madera if it's not the vehicle impact fee. I am confused, frankly, because we hear about a migration and we hear that people are putting less into the garbage. But if they're putting less into the garbage, wouldn't that mean that we could have a substantial reduction in the tipping fees and the landfill fees? Because the landfill fees would be reduced commensurately by the less that we put into the garbage. So I don't see that as being zeroed out. I don't, or I don't see that as being offset here. With regard to, one of the actual amounts was workers' comp, and the, this was on page 10 of the report. The actual increase is, however, just based on a quote. So the question I have is, was that quote accepted or not? And were there, usually one gets several quotes in a competitive workers' compensation insurance market. So I wonder what happened with that. Something I could not tell from the discussion was which expenses, either actual or proj- Something I could not tell from the discussion was which expenses, either actual or projected, were charges by affiliates of Marin Sanitary. That is critical to know because expenses that are not determined in the open market need to be, need extra scrutiny because they aren't determined by an arm's length. And I remember that last, in past years, the reports have made mention to transfer costs. And I didn't see anything here this year, and so I couldn't tell. So again, it's discouraging to see that we have yet another increase. And I think the focus has to be to clarifying some of these charges that aren't clear and in comparing as to why we're so different from Corte Madera. And one final point I would make is that the addendum to the staff report lists a long list of extra fees. And my question is, are these being increased or decreased? There wasn't any discussion of that. And of particular concern to me is the reference to return fees for return trips. Return trips are mostly for the reason, at least in my experience, that the collection was missed. So I don't believe that there should be any charges for missed collections where the return is as a result of that. And I would just question whether or not there's oversight of a lot of these, this long list of extra fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Would you like responses to your questions?
Yes, if.
Would you like to return and let's review your questions? I think there were three of them.
Yes. Shall we start with the workers' comp? Do you need the citation?
How should we approach this, Mr. City Manager?
I think it's your choice, Mr. Mayor.
Is it possible to, would you, would you like to respond this evening? Or would you like to take the questions and get back to us? Or how would you?
Might be best to provide written responses. A couple I could respond to this evening. One, we'll need to just click and turn with the company.
Are you okay with written responses, Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we get written responses for you?
Yeah. I will give you my telephone number. And if you need clarification as to what I was asking, I will.
Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion, consideration of staff recommendation. Councilmember Harof, would you like to start?
Yeah, I'll start. And I just want to thank the representatives from the service and also Garth for your presentation this evening. I thought it was very thorough and enlightening in many, in many respects. And I think Mr. Holmes' questions were all good ones. So we'll be looking forward to seeing some of the responses that you're able to prepare. But I'm sure they'll be accurate and thoughtful. So we'll just look forward to seeing that. The only other comment is, again, I appreciate your working with, working together to come up with adjustments to the proposed rate increases. That sounds like they're, everyone's agreed to on your side. And very grateful that you were able to come to an agreement that would result in a reduced projected rate increase. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Way?
I pretty much echo a lot of what Councilmember Harof said. Garth, I think your presentation and whatever your company is doing consulting-wise was much clearer to me than in previous years. So I appreciate that. And Mr. Garbino, the description of the waste diversion is pretty compelling. I think that's going to be an interesting change in the, that we're going to have to look at maybe the next time around, when we see how the changes are in your work environment's going to be from that. I think also with Kevin's point, the working at the 8.06 and reducing it to 5.57 shows me good faith interest in trying to find the best opportunity for our consumers to get the services they need at the most competitive price. I appreciate that. And once again, I, this is the city manager the other day, I do a lot of international travel. I think garbage pickup at your home is probably the best invention that ever happened. Because I've been in many parts of the world where it's extraordinarily different than what we live in. And I really appreciate that this is a service that we can provide at a decent price. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, thank you for presenting to us again tonight. You know, I kind of smile at, you know, you say, in other countries. You know, I used to get up early going to New York, and you see the barges leaving New York and going to New Jersey, you know. So at least we're trying to deal with everything we have here. And to point, I'm going to make, I think one of the things, as I previously mentioned, is that there's truly a cost to dealing with garbage. And, you know, like you mentioned, the changes in how we consume are creating that garbage. So, you know, to the extent that, you know, that price needs to be factored in, and that people need to understand what they're paying for is probably the biggest issue. You know, I look at the analysis, both from the current as well as the previous consultant. And there isn't anything that really hits me in the face as not, you know, being out of line or anything like that. You know, when you consider state law on top of things directly associated with garbage, as well as the environmental aspect of trucks. And, you know, for us locally, we've imposed road impact fee. You know, those are all the things that directly are part of what it costs to get rid of garbage. And, you know, with everything else, we're dealing with recyclables now. That's, that's just going to continue to increase. And I think the only way to really deal with that is if people start reducing their garbage, you know, individually, which eventually becomes collectively. So, you know, I know you're out there trying to provide public education, but, you know, that's really where it needs to be. So thank you for coming in again tonight.
Vice Mayor Morris?
Well done, Larry. I had a tour of your plant, and it's pretty amazing. And I highly recommend for all elected officials and for students, et cetera, to come and see for themselves, because it really makes a difference, and it gives you such a better understanding. So I really am happy you continue pushing, come and see, and see how important it is and what we have to deal with. I'm ready to make a motion to pass the resolution if we're done with discussions.
Councilmember Harof?
Just, just one last thing. And not to deviate from that, because I'm ready to go for motion as well. But just in reflecting more on the thought process that is looking at the methodology overall in time, having participated in some of the meetings and discussions that led to the current methodology, which incorporated the use of indexing, which I think is a good, a good idea. I think it's important and streamlined, you know, the overall effort. I just want to just add a cautionary note that, you know, part of, part of the trade-off there is indexing is kind of a blunt tool that can sometimes work to somebody's benefit one year and maybe not to the next year. So just to be, just to be cautious as you're reviewing the methodology going forward in the future, to make sure there is a sufficient opportunity for communities and service to go back into the rate structure and make sure that not only is it streamlined, but it's also working for everyone's benefit. That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Back to the motion? I'd like to make a vote.
I heard that we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Morrison is going to make the motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she did. Go ahead.
Resolution number 0918, a resolution of the city council of the city of Larkspur, setting rates for garbage and recycling collection.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, thanks.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Yes, sir, Mr. Garbino. And I would just like to add, we understand that adapting to the conditions of the market, and especially with this, in this area is very difficult. And we also understand that your service is so supportive of our quality of life here that it's very critical that we all work together and keep up the important parts here. Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the problems that none of us realize, after being mandated by the state that we, you, the elected officials, are going to be fined $10,000 a day if you don't reach a certain amount of recyclables. We surpassed those from day one. When we were asked if we could put out a 20 gallon can, well, we rode along with that. And this ties into a comment that Mr. Holmes made about dump rates and all that. We have a graph that's a 10 or 15 years back, when we first put the 20 gallon can out. And when we put that can out, it went up like this, the amount, and so did the garbage weight, go up right along with it. Now, it's one thing, as you get older, and I am, that you don't use as much garbage. But you're still getting many items that don't belong into that recycling bin, but you're putting them in there. Now, it's fine with me because I could see where they could use them. But nevertheless, we should have gone to each house and find out who lives there, and if they're aged, and they need a 20 gallon, you give it to them, not just across the board. And when people come down and see the amount of garbage that we produce on a daily basis, five days a week, it's astronomical. That's a real, real problem. And thank you very much for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes this agenda item. Thanks for all your work. We're going to move from the public hearing portion of the calendar to the business item portion. And we'll take 90 seconds. Let the room clear? To let the, to let the massive crowds clear the chamber.
It may take an hour.
Bigger than I've seen in a long time. All right. We're going to move to number eight on the agenda this evening, business items. Item 8.1, fiscal year 2016-17 audit of the city's basic financial statements.
I'm going to invite up the finance director, Kathy Orm, to introduce the auditor, and then he'll take you through your audit.
Good evening, Mayor Hillmore, councilmembers. Tonight, we have Mark Wong from Mays Associates to present our June 30, 2017 financial statements. I think we have pretty good news there. And I'd also like to announce that Mark has retired in December. This will be his last presentation for the city. So, Mark?
Way too young to retire.
I agree.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Wong, and, you know, from Mays and Associates. And yep, I'm retiring. I've retired in December 31, 2017. So right now, I'm, but I'm still working part-time for the company. So, okay, so, so like in prior year, I would go through two reports. So two, the two reports are the basic financial statements, and then the other one is called the memorandum on internal control and required communications. So, so on the basic financial statements, before I jump into that, I just want to make a general comment that 2017, when compared to 16, 2017 went really well. So I want to acknowledge Finance Department and Kathy, that, you know, I'll go into more detail, but the audit adjustments, general entries, has improved a lot. So I just want to mention that first. Okay, so on, on the basic financial statements, on page one, so again, on page one, on top of it, where it says independent auditors report. Okay, so basically, that's as the independent auditors, that's our opinion of the city's financial statements as of June 30, 2017. So management's response, on the second paragraph, again, you know, management's responsibility. Basically, the city is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements. We assist the city to prepare the financial statements and go through a number of review between us and basically and Kathy. So, and as the auditors, our responsibility is to express an opinion on those financial statements. And as part of those financial statements, we do certain internal control testing. We do not test all internal control. And again, we do not express any opinion on the internal control. However, if there are any, during our testing, if we note any items that are related to internal control, that according to the professional standards, we are required to make a comment. So, and I'll go through that in the, in the second report. On page two, so on page two, basically, on top of page two, opinions. So in our opinions, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects as of June 30, 2017. So which is, which is, which is basically an unmodified opinion or clean opinion. Okay, and so on page 16, on page 16, so I'm going to go on page, jump to page 16. So on page 16, 16 and 17 is the statement on net position. So that gives, basically, that reports the city's financial position entity-wide, city as a whole. So just a couple of highlights on page 17, on page 17, where you see, where it says at the bottom, where it says change in, change in net position. So the change in net position for, for the fiscal year was 4.1 million. So which is, which is a good, which is positive, which is a good thing. So the ending net position is 35.3 million. So, and go back on page 16. So going back on page 16, the highlight there is cash investments, 22, right on top, the first line, where it says 22.7 million for cash investment. So, which is a healthy position for the city. And the other thing, again, you know, every year, we pointed out to most of our clients. So in the under liabilities, the net pension liability at the bottom, where you see, it says, basically, it's 13.7, sorry, 13.6 million. So it's an increase from last year. So which, which consistent, which is very consistent compared to other cities, it's, it's very consistent. So, and on that, so I want, I do want to go back on page seven. So page seven in this section is, is part of the MDNA. It's prepared by management. It's a management discussion and analysis. So this whole section here, basically on page five to the whole section there. And the reason I want to, at the bottom of page seven, so basically, page seven, last year, councilmember Larry Chu talked about, you know, how the net pension liability, the measurement date that they use is actually June 30, 2016 number, which is a year ago. They reported on the June 30, 17 financial statements. And the discount rate that they use is 7, it's 7.65. So I think, on top of page eight, so basically, on page eight, this year, in the MDNA, there's a, there is a verbiage there that says that if the, it says that if the discount rate is lower than 7.6, maybe, maybe we should go back on page seven. So on page seven, basically, in September 2016, at the bottom of page seven, on September 2016, CalPERS has voted to lower the discount rate, basically from 7.5 percent to 7 percent over the next three fiscal year, beginning in fiscal 2018. So, so basically, the financial impact, it will have an impact, is that in fiscal 18, 19 onwards, cities' contribution due to the decrease in discount rate is going to be substantially higher. So, you know, so, so city would have to take that into account in terms of budgeting for appropriations expenditures. And so, so the discount rate in 2000, for the report, for the fiscal year, we use a, sorry, CalPERS used a discount rate of 7.65. So when they go down to, from 7.65 to So, when they go down to, from seven point six five to seven, eventually to seven, the, the liability is expected to be substantially higher. So, so, basically, what, on top of page eight, what it's trying to say is that if, if CalPERS had used a, for lack of better word, a close, a discount rate is closer to what it actually is, the liability is actually a lot, it's gonna be a lot higher. So, but because CalPERS uses a, actually, they use a smoothing method, which is allowed, which is allowed, so, that smoothing method, you know, sort of smoothed out the liability, and that way, the cities are not, they do not have to pay out, yeah, annual contributions. It's like a sudden increase, so. Okay, so, this is all for net pension liability. Next thing, okay, OPEP, net OPEP obligation, so, go, go back to page sixteen. On page sixteen, just on top of net pension liability, where you see four point, like, four point four eight nine million, do you see that? Just on top, okay. So, this is the, so, this is the, basically, net OPEP is, stands for other post-employment benefits. It's basically retiree healthcare. So, retiree healthcare, because of the premium and insurance is very expensive. So, fiscal year two thousand seventeen, the measurement, the measurement is under this accounting standard called GASP number forty-five, which is the all. So, in two thousand seventeen, all defined benefit for retiree healthcare benefits have to implement GASP seventy-five. So, the expectation that next year, the net OPEP, next year, it becomes, it, it's called net OPEP liability, so, next year, the verbiage will change. It's called net OPEP liability, and the expectation is that it's going to go up to at least, in the back, in the back here, there is, on, if you go on page fifty-nine, on page fifty-nine, in the footnote, according to the valuation, that was, on page fifty-nine, the last, the last table on, under note eleven, in the July first two thousand fifteen, actual valuation, the actuary did a liability of twelve point seven million. So, we do not know how much it is for sure in fiscal years eighteen, but it's gonna be substantial, so. Oh, sorry. So, on page, you go to, yeah, so, oh, sorry, page fifty-nine, the last table, under note eleven, you see, one, two, three, four, on the fourth column, where it says unfunded, then in parentheses, overfunded actuarial accrued liability A minus B, where it says twelve point seven eight one million. So, that, that measurement is a, that measurement does not work, it's a different, it's a different, it's an actuarial, it's called a unfunded actuarial liability, it's not a gas, it's not a reported liability. So, it's, it's, it's not, where you see, basically, it's a different method of measurement. I only mentioned it so that you would, next year, in fiscal year eighteen, the measurement will be a bit closer to the measurement that they use for this big liability, this huge liability. Yeah, so. And, hopes that makes sense. Yeah, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, so, so, for, so, this is more like for administrative-wise, so, for fiscal year eighteen, the city would have to obtain a new actuarial report for GASP seventy-five. But I believe Kathy says that that may already have been a report already done or in process, so. Okay, and, page seventeen, talk about it. Okay, so, this is, so, what I've discussed earlier, it's just, basically, it's all citywide. So, now, I'm gonna go into the governmental, the fund level, so, on page twenty-two. So, if you go to, sorry, go, if you go to page twenty, so, on page twenty, this may be more familiar to, to you. This is where it's all, where you can see on page twenty, where you see, in the column, where you see governmental funds, capital projects, then other governmental funds, then in total. So, those are, those are the fund-level financial statements where, in, in general, under general fund, general fund cash is eleven point eight million. So, general fund cash eleven point eight million, and the fund balance nine point one million. And on page twenty-two, on page twenty-two, which is the income statement for, on the first column, which is, I just want to highlight, the general fund's income statement and financial position. So, towards the bottom, where, where you see net change in fund balances, general fund has a, a positive increase of two point one million, which is, which is good. So, next thing is on page, on page twenty-six and twenty-seven. So, on page twenty-six and twenty, twenty-seven is the, the city also has a internal service insurance fund. So, basically, on insurance funds, last year, the city ended up in a negative position, so. So, last, last year, I think, the, on page twenty-seven, you can see that the change in net position is a decrease of, of half a million, a half a million dollars. So, so, basically, the city should, for fiscal year eighteen and onwards, the city should consider funding the, as part of the budget, the city should consider funding the insurance fund, so. And just one last thing, on page sixty-seven, if you go to page sixty-seven, on page sixty-seven, so, page sixty-seven is good, on top, it says required supplementary information. And then it says schedule of proportionate share of the net pension liability. So, basically, this is a good, this is a good table. If you want to look at the city's pension liability over, over the last three years, you can see that the trend of the, on this second row, where in fiscal year two thousand, fiscal year two thousand fifteen, although it says, it says measurement date two thousand fourteen, just because accounting-wise is two thousand fourteen measurement, but it's reported for fiscal year two thousand fifteen. In any case, you, you'll see that the net pension liability has increased from nine million to ten point three million to thirteen point six million, so. That's all I have, that's all I have for the basic financial statements. So, I'm gonna go on to the next report, the report on memorandum on internal control and required communications. Okay, so, so, on page one, page one is our mem, is our memorandum on internal control from us, based, from the auditors to the, to the council. So, and again, if you look at the second paragraph, we talk about internal controls. So, you know, we, during, during our, during our audit, we test certain internal control, but we don't, we do not test, we do not test all, all internal controls. We only test internal controls that we deem appropriate for our, to, to arrive at our opinion for the financial statements. Okay, and then, a definition of, so, on the third paragraph, so, on third paragraph, basically, it, it talks about what is a deficiency in internal control. So, a deficiency in internal control exists when a design or, or an operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent or detect and correct misstatement in a timely basis. And so, and so, what is a material weakness? So, basically, there's deficiency, and then there is, you know, there's significant deficiency, that's, and then there's material weakness. So, a material weakness, basically, is a deficiency or a combination of, of several deficiencies, such that there is a reasonable possibility that material weakness will not be prevented or detected or corrected timely. So, basically, it's, sometimes, so, when we, sometimes auditors give a comment on material weakness, it can be just by itself, or just by one issue, or it can be a certain, a few smaller issues that combine together to, you know, to arrive at a material weakness comment. So, basically, so, in our, in, in our memorandum on internal control, we have a comment on material weakness. So, in looking back, so, having said that, we look at the two thousand seventeen memorandum that we have to two thousand sixteen, there are fewer comments this year. So, I just want to, you know, to let council know, so. And with that, I'm gonna jump ahead and go to page three, so, page, on page three, on page three, basically, it's on top, where you see, it says a schedule of material weaknesses. And these are not, I think these are not new, so, you've, you've, in the last couple of years, you've seen it. So, basically, basically, it's a combination of, I think, it, it was a combination of, of how the, the financial system is set up. So, basically, I think, you know, Kathy has, the finance director has a lot of responsibilities. So, basically, the finance director has super user rights. We basically, we call it super user rights because, you find it, if, if an employee has access to be able to make changes and control the whole process or the whole cycle from, you know, from beginning to the end, that is a, that is a super user right. So, basically, you can run a system and make changes. And so, currently, the, the, the finance director is a super user of the financial system. And in the, in addition, the, the finance director can also, you know, perform cash receipts, accounts payable, payroll, and budget. So, and I know that, the finance department has also implemented some procedures to reduce that. So, it has, it has some of the risk, the potential risk that we've seen has reduced from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, which is a good thing. However, I think we want to make the comment because there's still, there's still that risk there. Okay, and, okay, I would, on page four, so, I'm gonna go ahead to the next, to the next, to the next comment. The next comment on general entry review process. General entry is basically, you know, it's a, it's a high-risk area because basically, general entry is, you basically go in, a user will go into the financial system and type in debit credit, so they can, you know, whoever has the rights, added, added rights to, to the general entry function of the general ledger, it's, it's a risk. So, 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 we, so, what we do, usually, what we do, we come in, we come in, under condition, you will, you will see that we come in, we would test, we will pick the general entries, and to make sure that the, there was always, it always has to go through a separate review. So, a separate review, sign off, and data. And, and the review should be reviewed timely. So, ideally, should be less than thirty days after it has been posted. So, so, I think, in the, in the findings that we have, the city has corrected it. So, basically, the city corrected, even though, so, what we found is that, although it has been reviewed, there was, it was, it wasn't dated, we, we didn't know when it was reviewed. So, but, you know, but, but it was reviewed, so, so, it just wasn't dated, so. So, and the finance department has corrected it, and so, going on forward into, next year, we test it every year, so, in two thousand eighteen, hopefully, our expectation is that, you know, there'll be no comment on general entry next year, so. So. On page seven and page eight, on, on, on page seven, page eight, we, we have two other comments. One, on top of page seven, two thousand seventeen dash oh-two, if you look on top, it's a schedule of other matters. So, so, basically, those are not items that we consider, those are comment, correct, we, they are not, they are not material weakness, and they are not significant deficiency. We basically, it's like a best practices comment, so. Two thousand, so, that's. So, I have, I have no, I have no comment on that. And I'm gonna go, go ahead to, to, just to highlight, on page nineteen, so, on page nineteen, it's, it's required communications, we have nothing unusual to, that's, it's, it's, this one is standard, there's nothing that's unusual from last year that I want to highlight, so. I think that's it. Any questions?
Questions from council members for Mr. Wong? Council member Chu?
Yeah. Is, if one of the purposes of the audit is to identify risk, when it's stated, you know, I kind of asked this question before, and, you know, you, you got half of it done. The, the other half was that, when CalPERS shows that they have effectively a four point one two percent market basket return for the next ten years, but even the discount rate right now is only going as low as seven, I would think that there's a huge additional liability between that gap. So, how, how do we, like, at least have a qualitative discussion about that? Because you're presenting both, both pieces, so, anyone who puts two and two together is gonna figure that out.
Right, so, so, I think, so, basically, I think, so, under, 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 under the gap reporting, because it has to be comparable, so, and because it's comparable of, like, Luxper's net pension liability with all the other cities, and because of that, I think, and CalPERS, who is the actuary, and CalPERS actuary has decided that, that is the, all the members of, all the city members from CalPERS, they are, they all, for two thousand, for measurement date of two thousand sixteen, they all use seven point six five. So, I think, because of that, you know, it's, because of that, I think, and because of the smoothing method that, that they have elected to use, so, that's the actuaries, that's how they report. how they reported it, and that's how they calculated it.
Yeah, I think the calculation in the reporting is different than, similar to what you've done about the reduction in the discount rate that's going to be expected, because at 7.65, you're looking at the thing 16 or 18 months back, because those are numbers as of June 30th from, like, a year and a half ago. CalPERS is always about 14, 16 months late.
Correct, so, so for, for net pension liability, they are, they are, based on measurement date, they are, you know, they can either use the current fiscal year, or they can use one year ago. So, I think it depends, because the reporting standards allow them, the government accounting standards allow them to either use June 30, 2017, or use June 30, 2016.
Oh, yeah, I'm not questioning what's actually being used in the analysis. I'm talking about identifying qualitatively a huge additional liability.
So, I, so I, that's because I think that the CalPERS use, using the smoothing method to smooth it out, that's how they, that's how they, that's how they come to that 7.65 versus seven.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand that, I'm not questioning their calculation. I'm questioning the absence of identifying what is a much bigger liability than is actually being depicted because of exactly what you're saying. You're using calculations that have been accepted as part of the standardization of the reporting.
Right.
But when, in fact, you go to page 56, and you show this asset mix that only produces in the first 10 years a 4.12% return, and in the, in the 11-plus years after that, about a 4.9% return. So, that's nowhere near seven, even if it gets down to seven. So, really, what that indicates is that ourselves and every other public agency that's part of this organization has a much higher liability than what is actually being stated. And, and I think that needs to be called out to some degree, because you can always use existing information to try and project out, you know, on a percent basis, okay, you have a 1% reduction in, in the discount rate, this is what it's going to cost you.
Okay, so if, so it takes on, on page 56, so if you look, if you look at page 56, the last table of note 10, it has that, it has that, it has that, where it says the current discount rate, it's for net pension liability for safety members, it's 7.1 million, whereas if it's a 1% decrease in discount rate, it's 11.2 million.
Okay, so we got to take it down to four, 4.12, because that's, that's the next, that is, that is what your current portfolio composition says that they expect to make, because nobody else is paying for that, labor's not paying for it, CalPERS is not paying for it, so the employer's going to pay for it.
Where do you see the 4.1 million?
No, that's, that is the weighted average of each of those assets in that table on page 56.
Okay, 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 so.
Okay, we don't have to solve this now, but I want to continue to, you know, kind of pass that message on to your successor.
Because, yeah, because, because this is, this is the, this is a reporting standard required by GASP, so we have to follow what the, we have to, we have to report what the actuaries has reported, as long as, as long as they've done it, we didn't that allow, allow parameters, so, you know, that's how they, that's how they report it.
Yeah, well, going back to my initial comment, said if the audit is to identify risk, this is one risk that hasn't been identified.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we don't have to have that debate now. Okay, just real quick, then, there, there were a couple minor cleanup, actually, one minor cleanup item, we're not part of the Marin Telecommunications Agency anymore, so, you know, that, that can come out of the list of JPAs. In, in the OPEB trust, it showed that there was a negative investment return, is that because the holdings were mark-to-market, or is that because they had effectively a negative interest rate?
Oh, I'm sorry, can, can we look, look at which page?
Yeah, I don't remember what page that's on, but.
Oh, page 31. I don't, I'm not sure about that. Kathy, do you know, page 31, 1500.
This is because what you're showing there is not just money, we're putting a trust for the long term. We rotate money through a trust to pay current premiums. And so, there's money coming right back out to pay the premiums of current retirees. And so, you're, until we build up a substantial amount between our two accounts, you're going to see this negative.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that makes sense. All right, thanks. And, you know, the issue is super user privileges. Does, do the people now who have those, that level of access, when, when we say super user, a lot of times, that suggests that it's at a system administration level and not at the user level. So, we don't do system administration here. I, I would think that if staff has been given the commensurate privileges for their position and job responsibilities, i- is that correct? Has staff been given the appropriate level of privileges commensurate to their job description and job responsibilities?
Do you want me to address that, Mark? So, the answer to your question later, you framed it as yes, but what the auditors are trying to flag is that in an ideal scenario, there'd be another employee in the finance department, like an accountant or finance manager, and some of the authority we've been, we've given to the finance director, you would give to that other person, so that elements of the system would require both those employees working in concert to implement change. Kathy does have, the authority finance director does have the ability to essentially initiate and execute certain elements of the system, and that's what the auditors are referring to as super users. Now, the way we try to control that is that on some transactions, another employee of the finance department is required, the banks help us implement that control. On others, I review the documentation to make sure it's consistent with the anticipated transactions, and so our risk is reduced to the lag time between the transactions being executed and me reviewing the transactions. And Kathy and I have actually been talking about trying to tighten that lag time up as much as we can. Really, without another body, whether it was me or a, somebody in the finance department providing some of that checks and balance on execution, we're always going to have this particular issue, and we've accepted that level of risk because it's efficient for us, it's not ideal, but given where we want to allocate our overall resources, I've felt it's an acceptable level of risk. And so, it's going to keep appearing in the audit until, less than until we were to add that additional person to help implement this checks and balance further. I feel the risk on these lag times is pretty slow, sometimes I'm seeing things within days of the transactions occurring, the longest anything goes is a month, and those are very small transactions that I only see on a monthly basis. So, you're not talking about large sums of money in any given exposure, you know. Short of that, we'd have to have somebody who was in that position, who was doctoring, truly doctoring the books, and that's then what Mark's jobs to find out, so that we avoid that scenario. It's not perfect, but we've decided to accept that level of risk, and we insure against it, too. We actually do purchase insurance to protect us against.
Because, do you have at least segregation where the person who is capable of doing a particular function also has the ability to change the privileges for that function?
Kathy does have the ability to implement changes to the privileges that people have. So, I guess the answer is yes, we have an exposure there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, so, in, in some other cities, what they do is, so basically, like, for example, in some cities where if it's printing of blank checks, it's, good example, like blank check stocks, if blank, if blank check stock, sometimes maybe they would just assign it to, to another employee, so that, that, that employee who does not have, who's not in the management level, so sometimes those, you know, simple measures like that, sometimes it's sort of, so that when you run AP, at least there's one process, not one person can, can initiate and go all the way to the end to just GL, so, you know, so sometimes, I don't know, I do not know if that's possible here, but, you know, that's one of the examples that some smaller entities, they, that's how they handle it, so, yeah, so.
Other questions for Mr. Wong, from the council? Are there, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Yes, sir.
Just a question about, I think I understand the answer regarding the material deficiencies, but I was just curious because there is a reference in terms of.
James, you need to get on the mic.
James Holmes, just in terms of the documents available, I noticed that the, the, the report, the internal control report, it, it's one page, 87 to 88, but then it refers to a memorandum on internal control dated December 18th, which is an integral report of our audit and should be read in conjunction with this report, and then it, it refers to a material deficiency schedule and the city's response to material deficiency schedule. These were not in, included in the, the packet, and so I assume they're public reports, and they probably should, should have been.
We can get Mr. Holmes' copy.
Actually, I think I understand, I think I understand.
The council did get it, though, I apologize.
From listing, but I think it probably should be in the, in the report, since it's identified as an integral part, and which should be read in conjunction with this report. So, just for future reference.
I think it probably is posted in last month's agenda.
Actually, it wasn't.
No, I'll double check.
Because I, I, I saw it then, and then I saw it again tonight, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Thank you for your comments and your observations. Other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Chair.
I'm sorry, I have one more question for Mark. There were a number of new GASP requirements, since they're all kind of esoteric, do you, can you anticipate whether any of them actually have a probability of affecting Luxper?
GASP's 75 next year for the retiree healthcare.
Yeah, that's the only one?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you need an action to accept the financial statements this evening, Mr. Say Manager?
I move to accept the audit as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, happy retirement.
Happy retirement, congratulations.
We'll see you tomorrow.
That concludes our agenda items this evening. Next item is motion to adjourn. Councilmember Chu. Are we adjourning tonight in memory?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Certainly your option, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was going to suggest we adjourn in memory of Helen Highcamp and Craig Shirts.
Yes, both very significant members of our community, greatly valued and greatly missed. I'll note the reference to the article in the Independent Journal last night discussing Councilmember Height, or Ms. Highcamp, who was a longtime planning commissioner, and earlier in the week, there was an article talking, talking about Chief Shirts, father of current Chief Scott Shirts. So, we send our condolences and expression of sympathy to the chief and his family. With that, I'll take motion to adjourn.
I believe there's a memorial for Chief Shirts this Sunday.
That's correct, I don't have the time off the top of my head.
It's at the Cordera Community Center, I think it's three.
Could we post any memorials for Chief Shirts and Ms. Highcamp on our website?
Sure, be happy to.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.